So two, we will call this meeting to order. We are meeting now as a committee of the whole. Obviously, we'll be shortly formalizing that in policy, but we are permitted to do that, as I understand it from the clerk, under the Roberts rules. We are doing that. I will acknowledge that we are in Mi'kmaq, the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and I would look then to a motion to approve this meeting agenda. Moved by councillor Sanford, seconded by the deputy mayor. All those in favor, opposed, the motion is carried. This is our first time meeting in this fashion, so we have no minutes to approve. There's no unfinished business. There's new minutes, an opportunity for us to look over the CCP documents that were distributed and deal with the work plans. So you can see the new business there, and we will begin with a recap of the waiting analysis from the December 17 workshop, and Dawn will be leading us through that, or Ms. Sutherland, rather. Ms. Sutherland, you have the floor.
Okay. Just wait for the PowerPoint to come up. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So this is a quick review of the process that's behind the creation of the Gantt chart work summary. Gantt chart. Gantt chart work summary plan. That's still backwards. Next slide. So what we talked about before, next slide, please, Heather, that the work that staff did was quite, took a lot of time and quite intensive in terms of getting through the process. Took us a long time, probably mostly because it was our first time going through it, and there was a lot of material to cover. So we, you know, we used a scoring matrix. We estimated the timelines as best we could. We considered the steps, and we assigned department heads as leads to each and every action item. Next slide. So this is our action sheets. When I refer to action sheets, these are in back of the comprehensive community plan document. There are 35 sheets that the management team went through. Next slide. This is going to be fast. So after, after the public engagement, Upland came up with 65 actions. They applied this matrix here in front of you to come up with 35 top priorities, which is what we have today. So the matrix or the scoring criteria that they used had to do with community building, community preference, and enabling fundamentals. Next one. So this is what you need to know about how the action items were arrived at and scored. So it's, this is customized, the scoring is customized for our CCP. It's not a formula that you can apply to the town of Aniganish or the town of Brewer. It's only for the town of Lunenburg. The foundation of this document and the scoring is on public engagement, and we also brought in Upland's expertise and best practices to come up with how it was scored. Excellent. Oops, sorry. So the five-year review analysis is a little bit different. It takes the community value portion as 50%, so what Upland had used, and there's a further 50% made up of financials, action assessments, and economics assessments. And this is basically consideration of the financial aspects, and it's very important for the budgeting process. So this is a sheet out of what the management team were using. This is, this is one I did. So the initial review was for each action item, and it was quite intensive. So we, we did this. We also, maybe I'm too close to this. We also, there was also predetermined scoring, so there were marks assigned to each, each scoring criteria, and there were clear scoring descriptions. You can see them in the little box there. Is there a next one, Heather, please? So this is an example. I can't read that from here, and probably you can't either. So there was like 175, 50, 20, and 0, I think. So staff had to determine where an item fell, and you should note that it's either a 50 or it's not 50. It's in the 75 range or it's not in the 75 range. If we didn't know if it quite met the 50, you couldn't give it a 48. Like, it's either 50 or not, and that's the way their scoring system works. So all this information was translated into another Excel sheet with the voodoo magic of Lisa and Kathleen with their Excel. So they translated it into another form, and then they translated, next slide, again into, they manipulated the data into the rankings. And this is just an example. You've seen this before. It goes from 1 to 35. This is just the top rankings here, just to show you what, what it translated into. So then the next one is we use that, and then we went into each individual Gantt chart. So every action page has a Gantt chart associated with it. So we took the 35 and we did this. We created Gantt charts based on implementation steps. So if you see at the bottom of your screen, there's implementation steps, and then I have the red arrows going to, to different steps, and underneath the steps is what staff has done. We tried to break it out as best as possible, the steps to achieve that, the little steps to take to, to get to the next step. So that's, that's how we came, all the, all the charts are, look, look like that, are very similar to that. You have to note that some steps are dependent on the step before it, and some are based on things like funding, the availability of funding. So it might not come to the next step, but we don't, we have it in there anyway. Okay, Heather? And this is what, what the CIO will be going through. So another manipulation of the data, summaries were created for the 35 actions, and you note in, in green there, some of, this means they're in process, but will require funding or other resources to complete. The yellow is dependent on external, external impact such as funding, changes in legislation may be necessary. Also, on the chart, in your charts, you'll be able to see it shows phases where it's shaded, and the hatchmarks are overlapping. So we know that we've already started some. Of course, we, the engagement started two years ago, so we have, we've started on this already. We already identified some and have started on them. So we've started quite a few, actually, and some will be ongoing for a long time into the next, the next five-year review. Okay. So that's, that's just a really quick overview of what I talked about on December, December 17. Nothing has changed, just that we've made the Gantt charts and we've put the implementation steps in. So now I will let the CIO go through the summaries, plan summaries. Thank you.
That would be helpful. So to get your worship, are there any questions at this point in time that anybody might have if we want to pause and? And I would like to very much thank Dawn for providing that overview. Personally, I have found the waiting exercise to be the most complex component of the CCP implementation process. It was something very new to me. We do it a little bit in procurement, but nothing to the extent that we have in this. It's a very involved and a very important process, so we thought it merited a further review. And some of, some folks were unable to attend the session in December, and I know I certainly benefit from a review every time as to how we arrived at those priorities. If I may as well, your worship, I wanted to pause for a second and acknowledge the participation of the other managers, aside from Dawn, Arthur, and Heather, who are physically with us in attendance. We have a full house of managers who are tuning in via Zoom as well, so if anybody has any questions particular to Dennis, Lisa, Paul, Kathleen, who else have we got on the line? Kelly Cunningham. Dennis, Paul, Lisa, Kelly Cunningham, Kathleen. Yeah, that's it. Excellent. So, thank you. So they, due to travel conditions, the nasty start to the day with weather, they are participating through the Zoom option. So your worship, we'd like to next take you through a bit of a guided tour of the comprehensive community plans, 35 strategic direction actions that you see up on the screen there and on your iPads. And as I mentioned earlier, we also provided you with the hard copy, because I find it very difficult. It's a very content-rich document. It's a one-pager with a multimillion-dollar range of projects encompassing five years' worth of work, so we thought it might be handy to have a hard copy. And there's also the excerpt from the original CCP document indicating the various strategic direction, action, goal items, with some costing provided as well for your reference. So as you see on the chart, there is, there are some main headings. It indicates that it's the five-year work plan, as, as we see. Heather, if you're able to expand that chart on the screen a ton, maybe just, yeah, focus in on some of those items as we go through them. Thank you. We indicate, again, that it's a summary of the work plans. It provides an estimated timeline, and I think council very wisely, with the leadership of the mayor and deputy mayor in particular, indicated that this would be a helpful process for us to go through, sort of providing a roadmap and a visual identifier for the work ahead and breaking it down into phases. Again, at the, at the early stages of developing these kind of documents, it's a bit daunting, to say the least, but when we crack on and, and start to, you know, work through these processes, it's, it's very much worth the effort. I think council is to be commended for their vision in undertaking this kind of exercise. We also note at the beginning of the page, we've tried to color-code the document for you as well. So if Heather can just highlight there a little bit to the right. Thanks, Heather. When you see the green color coding, you'll note that that indicates that that work is currently in process. So whether it may be, we'll actually, item number 35 on the chart that we see ahead of us. So notwithstanding the fact that from a priority waiting exercise point of view, that particular item, which arguably from Arthur's perspective would be one of the most important things that the community could undertake, is not forgotten. It's actually being exercised probably on a daily, if not a weekly basis. It may, however, require some resources. There might be financial resources in the upcoming budget and budget years that will be required. There may be legislative requirements as well and other preconditions along the way. So we'll, we'll take you through some of those examples. And we have 24 out of 35 such action items that are color-coded green. The next color that we've utilized is yellow or sort of an amber color to indicate that there may be some activity that could take place, but more likely than not, these are going to be very dependent upon certain preconditions. Money predominantly, but there might be some legislative preconditions, and we'll take you through some of those examples. The final color coding or graphic depiction on the chart is one for overlapping phases. I must say, I find it a little, little tough to read, but I know Heather will zoom in for us and do that, and I did want to thank Heather for her masterful consolidation of all of the charts that have been submitted by managers. Dawn had the, probably the lion's share of them to do, but Arthur and everyone else on the management team has had a, some aspect of work to prepare the individual charts. So Heather definitely designed the overlapping imagery to indicate that for you as well. So then going through the chart itself, explaining the 1 through 35, we just wanted to recap for you as well the main themes that we find in the strategic action or comprehensive community plan. There's quite a handful of them, probably over seven. We see main themes of community structure, housing, servicing and facilities, mobility, economic development, heritage, urban design. And if I can turn the page here. Environmental sustainability, culture, and recreation, and governance. So quite a wide swath of municipal responsibilities and some new ones as well. We have, in this chart, prepared the timelines for implementation of these 35 items that fall within those main themes or strategic directions. And Heather, I might get you to turn now to some examples, if you wouldn't mind. We'll go to Gantt chart number four as an example. This is one relating to economic development, and then we'll show you how the more detailed Gantt charts weave into the summary document, and hopefully they'll be a little easier to read. Yeah, action item number four. Yeah, thank you. There are quite a few documents that we dive into and come out of and then go back into, your worship, so if people can just give us a moment. Thank you, Heather. Yeah, and that's great to focus in on that column there. So the main focus of this particular strategic direction action goal, that's quite a handle that comes with the CCP headings, economic development, and this one focuses on enhancing relationships with surrounding communities and municipalities. So there's several steps to implementation, and those are indicated by bolding throughout the phases there. We would like to summarize for you some of the key work that we're doing right now, and this one is an action that represents a five-year time implementation. It's not that there's necessarily a specific start and endpoint for one specific goal. It is a more holistic approach to a constant in our lives of looking to always seek intermunicipal partnerships and opportunities wherever they may present. It reflects in particular with some of the wording that is added in that specific Gantt chart to reflect our current extensive intermunicipal channels for discussion that include such activities as our Lunenburg County municipalities' economic development meetings. So there are staff meetings throughout Lunenburg County municipal representation that occur on a fairly regular basis, notwithstanding the fact that we no longer have a regional enterprise network or a regional development agency. Unfortunately, that was dissolved a couple of years ago. We also have ongoing Lunenburg County mayors and wardens meeting, and just last week, it was agreed that they would start taking place on a more solidified basis, on a quarterly basis. And joint services are the essence of that meeting setting. We are continuously talking informally, albeit, about opportunities to work together across municipal boundaries in service to our citizens on a joint basis. Now Lunenburg County membership is identified in this chart as well. We have teamed with them on a number of projects, most recently with physician recruitment. They have a publication and other forms of advertisement, of which we were always a key partner in sponsoring. We have various initiatives that occur in departmental areas as well, including the Lunenburg Recreation Meetings. That's a very active group that does everything from joint programming to equipment sharing, trying to incubate new sports and activities and fundraising opportunities. And as well, we have a variety of NSFM or Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities, regional and provincial meetings, and those that occur at the Association of Municipal Administrators level. We have one coming up this month. And there are various other facets of intermunicipal partnerships that occur, but the print gets really tiny, so we won't take you through that, but just to let you know, there's a lot, a lot that happens in that area. The chart also is very instructive in that it indicates what the potential partnership opportunities are. And I think in this sector, most of them are being actioned right away on an ongoing basis. We have partnerships with Municipality District of Lunenburg, Chester, Counties of Bridgewater, Mahone Bay, and Queens. For example, this afternoon, Paul and myself were participating in a regional emergency management communications exercise that spanned the entire county. So some really great things that are going on, really on a daily basis. So if, if that concludes that slide, unless people had some questions, your worship, we proceed on to governance. The next chart is number seven, that I thought might be a helpful review. And again, this is dovetailing into the summary chart, but providing a more in-depth overview of, of what makes up that one pager that you, you were first provided with. So that's number seven, other governance. Sort of building on a theme here, which I think is a very important one in the comprehensive community plan. This one identifying more, deepening our work with local and regional partners in the provision of shared services. In some of them, we've noted briefly already, the Regional Emergency Management Office. We've made great strides in that regard. In the past, we sort of went alone, and there were some issues with the startup of the original regional approach, but I think those have been ironed out, and we've been a very active partner for the last several years. We have a great regional coordinator who's made a lot of advancements in all aspects of emergency response. Next, we have the Region Six Solid Waste Management Committee, and there's always a council appointment, as you know, on that, and that's a great bridge for joint funding opportunities, promotions, environmental awareness opportunities, to try and look at new initiatives. They're always looking at ways of reducing packaging as a huge source of solid waste and ways in which, in shifting the responsibility to producers and suppliers of that, instead of us always being the endpoint. And by working together on such measures, we can achieve a lot more than just a one's, one voice. As you know, we have a joint building inspection service arrangement, and that is going to be expanded on further. I think in the month ahead, Dawn will be looking at, hopefully, working across four, four municipalities in providing joint building services, and there'll be a lot of IT upgrades that are currently being tested for implementation, with the idea being that it'll be a very similar process, whether you apply for a building permit in the town of Lunenburg or the municipality of the District of Lunenburg. Their builders and homeowners shouldn't see any difference in the processing of applications and the permits. That had been something that had been expressed as a concern in the past about differences in intake and processing and inspection services. So by trying to work together to achieve something that is workable for all concerned on a more solidified basis, this project, we hope, will be very successful. It has, notwithstanding though, taken a while to get to, to this point. We have also the fire inspection agreement that we're currently working on with the town of Bridgewater. It's in draft form. We have a very unique municipal website venture program that we have partnered on with our Association of Municipal Administrators, that we have one common municipal website master, and he provides and works with people such as Heather on redesigning and updating our website as needed, and I know they're working on a vigorous refresh that should soon be revealed to the public. So that's a great thing that we can achieve in partnership with municipal colleagues as opposed to kind of going it alone. We learn from the examples of others and the expertise that's gained from centralized experts in the area. We are also, as you know, working actively on an IT intermunicipal service agreement with the Municipality of the District of Chester and have submitted our funding application for provincial sponsorship of that, we hope, very soon for their response. And we have many partners, some of whom we've already mentioned, at the municipal and intermunicipal level through provincial organizations. So that's another example. Now, your worship, we could go through a couple of more if you would like. There's one on economic development, and there's a governance organizational review that I thought might be of interest to council, but I don't know if I've managed to put you to sleep already. Maybe we should pause.
Well, I'll look to council to give direction on that. Are we feeling like we could discuss it, or are we up for two more?
Yep, is that okay? All right.
Yeah, so let's, let's do those two, and then we'll cut it off and start the discussion. Does that sound good to everybody?
Okay. Good. Thank you very much, your worship. I'll try and tidy it up here. So turning to number 14, looking at governance and organizational review. So this would be, I think Heather, this is an active green item. Let me get there. The comprehensive community plan, I think correctly identified that it would be very important to look at the current organizational structure of the community to determine what, if any, changes and improvements could be made to facilitate the implementation of the plan. Some of the items in the action that we've canvassed are things that we work on an ongoing basis, but many are introductions to our workload, and they also require some areas of specialization that we don't currently have in-house. So an organizational review was correctly identified as something that we needed to focus on. Again, as part of the waiting exercise, whether or not I agree with it or not necessarily, it was part of a collaborative effort. So it came in at number 14 in the priority ranking, but I think that there would be some, probably some strong differences of opinion, perhaps at the council level, that it should be ranking higher. Notwithstanding, I'll, I'll comment on that further about how we might address some of those things. So this focuses on undertaking an organizational review that will identify changes required, rather, for enabling implementation of the comprehensive community plan itself. Some suggestions as a phase-in for this undertaking would be to look at hiring externally a consultant for a third-party organizational review. There are also some internal options. We have had a prior organization restructuring that was done, I think, back in 2015, sorry, 2017, and with some refresh. I think that's something the council could revisit, and I've already started to work on that in discussions with the mayor and deputy mayor, and I think there's considerable merit, and our finance staff have looked at some of the options for possible implementation. If we look, do look at an external review there, excuse me, though, we would probably need to secure some funding. There might be external funding opportunities through the province. We haven't explored that yet, but certainly there would be, at a minimum, some requirement for local cost-sharing requirements for us to match. So that's one of the items. And the timeline is set out in that chart. Heather, I don't know if you can zoom out a little bit there, so to speak, just to show the, obviously not taking place just in two months, but you see it, we have a little bit more expansive timeline to it, but not, but not overly so. I think once you do something like this, it might be sort of a year undertaking, and then you, you look at implementing along the way. Is that possible? If, if not, it's on the summary chart, if you can get out your magnifying glasses. You can, there we go. Yeah. And you see, there's some blotches of activity, too. There's some things that might just take a couple of months, and then you move on to the next step. So that really gets into the nitty-gritty of how do you go about doing perhaps a request for proposals for external consultants, and then how do you evaluate, engage, and go through that work process with them, and then final reporting, so on and so forth. So it sort of takes you through the micro details. So it sort of takes you through the micro details of, of that work process. If we turn next, Heather, to slide number 23 in our more comprehensive gap charts, that's about economic development. And I certainly think this is one that's critically important to achieving many of the goals of the comprehensive community plan, notwithstanding it did not rate particularly high, coming in at 23 out of 34. I, I was not given a veto power over the, I respect the input of my colleagues. So again, it addresses the main theme or strategic direction of economic development, one of the core components of that, with this more specific directive or action of establishing a staff position that can support economic development initiatives. Now, many years ago, the town of Lunenburg had a very active Economic Development Commission. It actually was sort of a semi-autonomous incorporated organization, and it operated out of the old train station with where South Shore, Second Women's Center is, Second Story Women's Center, sorry. And that was a time when there was lots of provincial funding for all sorts of neat projects to take place, Main Street funding and other kind of initiatives, or just a really wonderful center for facilitating businesses and downtown improvements, and there was lots of really great projects that came out of that. But unfortunately, the funding is not there, and we don't have the, currently, the internal capacity to fund such a fulsome department, but at least one staff position that could support a lot of these CCP activities would be really helpful, to have a place at the table, to have someone who's regularly engaged with the COA, Nova Scotia Business, Inc., Develop Nova Scotia. We are so fortunate to have a high profile in this community, notwithstanding our relatively small population, but we don't have someone who's, you know, primarily focused on this task. So I see that as something that's really, really critical. Identified in that chart as well, at the bottom of the chart, Heather, I think in the red font are the potential partnerships, and that's a common component of every chart that staff have worked on that, as we look at our intermunicipal partners and a wide variety of provincial and federal colleagues across the board that have a big role to play in making that action item possible. Your worship, did you want to pause there? And I'll, I'll just offer some concluding comments if anybody had any questions about that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Seeing none, you can offer your concluding comments, and then we'll proceed to C.
Thank, thanks very much, your worship. So we hope that this review has provided for you an indication that across the board, these action items have, all have work plans that have been developed, which I'd like a tip of the hat to my colleagues who have since, what, really December 18th after that first presentation, and when you think back just a little bit before that, on November 17th, you adopted this document as your community plan. So I think they've made huge strides in developing and depicting all of the action items and the work plans for those. And, and a thanks to council as well, too, for challenging us to do that. There's a lot of activity in the day-to-day business of the community that can very easily keep us busy, but it's also exciting to be presented with opportunities like this, to have some new projects to work on and be incentivized to, to make these kind of presentations to you and look beyond, down the road to five years and where we hope to, to achieve the many items that are outlined in this document. Excuse me. I wanted to next turn, just in my concluding remarks, your worship, to posing some count, some questions of council and for council. Heather, if you could, okay, great. I have my reading glasses on, and I think that's the screen. I was thinking, thank you. It's not color-coded the other way, the other one was. So at this juncture, we welcome council's feedback. That's really from staff's perspective, and I hope we've correctly identified it, the purpose of this session. We're, we're seeking your feedback, positive, negative, points in between. We'd like to start the conversation with you about whether or not this has met your expectations. Are there deficiencies or there areas we have to go back and revisit? Are we on the right course of action? So just throwing that open to council, your worship, if, if council was so willing, are there any questions generally of, of council to staff? Have we met your expectations? And then I, I would appreciate the opportunity to ask a couple of questions of council, too, to sort of encourage the conversation to continue a bit. Thank you, worship.
Thanks. Before we get to questions, I'd like to, and I think I speak on behalf of all council when I say this, thanks staff for all the work that we know went into this. This is a lot of effort that will, hopefully is upfront effort that will pay dividends down the road for us. And with that, I will open the floor for council either to ask questions of their own or to answer those posed by staff. Counselor Halverson, always first on the draw.
Occupational hazard. Again, I want to echo what the mayor's saying. Thank you to all the staff, and that was tremendous amount of work, and we really do appreciate the amount of effort. We understand that you're working your butts off, but I also kind of want to say, this is where we're really going to start to dig in. This is where the pedal actually goes down. And with that concern in mind, I, I, I think the waiting exercise, as you're, as you're talking about, I think we really do need to look at how some of this is weighted, because I think when I'm looking at this, a couple of things stand out for me. The last two items that you just mentioned, the two I was going to bring up, an economic development officer and the organizational review. I'm concerned that what we're asking is, is going to put too much strain on, on the resources we have here. And I don't, I mean, I don't know. I don't know what your day-to-day looks like. Only you can answer that or a review. And I, I want to make sure that we're not overtaxing staff. I want to make sure that, you know, the, you're, you're not being overburdened, that the quality of the work isn't suffering, and that we, we are preparing ourselves, and we're setting ourselves up for success. And I don't know that we can do that unless we know for properly staff to go ahead. So I, I would, I would encourage us to perhaps maybe look at moving that, that organizational review up. Yep, my other concern I had about that, you mentioned another review that had taken place, the, is that, is that something, first off, you say it's 2017. Is there anything that may have, is that still current? Is there anything that may have changed in the operation of the town that might have, might affect how accurate that now is?
A lot.
Okay, so maybe, maybe that's not as useful the document at this point is.
There are some elements, your worship, because we have started to look at that a little bit, just in discussions with the mayor and deputy mayor. Yeah, there's some elements that are still very relevant. Others, we have gone on to chart new courses, like with the electric utility, for instance.
Of course.
So, yeah.
And then my other concern, just bringing, you know, bringing home on that review, the amount of funding it's going to take versus the amount of time it's going to take is, I, I'm looking at, when I go back to the chart that you had on here, sorry, I just jumped back for a moment, and it looked to be, you had, yes, a timeline basically is extending from now to middle of next year. I'm just concerned that, you know, we, as, as a council, we're on a timeline of, you know, really four years, and we want to see this get done. Is it asking too much if we try to accelerate that timeline? If we put that review ahead, is that, is that feasible?
So, sorry, we're on number 14?
14, yes.
Yeah. Your worship, well, that was with the understanding that there would be an external consultant hired, so that timeline was done. I, I've done some initial review with the assistance of Kathleen and Lisa from finance about other options for phase-in of some components of it. So some of that work has already been done and is not reflected in here, because that's very recent. Might be a fuller discussion committee of the whole or council in camera, I had to say. So can it be expedited? Yes, in part. A consultant review would be financially dependent, though, so that's something you're going to have to, you know, I think the estimate was about 100K plus or minus for something like that. So you're, you know, that's not something we have ready resources for unless you looked at your operating reserve. And this was, probably about the time that Lisa would drop in into the conversation. She'll probably take over, rather than me trying to find money for you.
Before we do that, though, I just, I just want to talk about the timeline that I'm seeing here. I would like to hear from Lisa, but I'd just like to look at the timeline, because I'm seeing that it looks like the, like we wouldn't be issuing an RFP on that consultant until this time next year, which just seems a, a, a long time off for what we're trying to get accomplished.
Well, you could expedite it. You could, you know, secure the monies in your budget, develop a terms of reference. We're, we're pretty good for procurement staffing now through Katie, myself, and others who, who are very good at that. Well, sorry, getting better, I should say. I don't want to be overly confident, certainly my own skills. And, and then you take it out to market. Yeah. So you could do it, you could do it faster. It all depends, too, on when the budget is approved, right? Now, sometimes council can pre-approve budget items, as, as you know, in the past, and then that just means you can start the process that much sooner. So yes, it could be expedited.
Okay. I'm going to go to Councilor Sanford. Thank you. Thanks, Counselor Halverson.
Just want to echo and completely agree with Counselor Halverson's concerns with regards to our staff. I think we all agree, staff are doing an amazing job. And when we look at the governance piece, given the last conversation that we had in our council meeting, we don't need to wait for a consultant's report to understand that we don't have the planning and development capacity that we need, that's required. So when you look down at the lead staff and you look down at the focus of where planning is needed, it's huge. So I agree with Counselor Halverson, and I think that in the case of planning and development, I'm wondering if there isn't an opportunity now. We don't have to wait, you know, for monies in the consultant and whatever, because we know we need to develop capacity. What that looks like, you know, we can talk further about that, but I would just like to share the concerns that Counselor Halverson put forward. My second piece of feedback here would be in the context of housing. So for those counselors that were door-knocking and whatever, I know hands down, we heard over and over and over 89 different aspects of housing. And again, it's come out loud and clear in the plan. When I look at this, and I've highlighted specifically six, but I also included in those six, the community structure. So I highlight at number 10, 13, 17, 20, 25, and 33, and all of which you can see relate to housing. Yet, all of those start with yellow highlights, which means, now aside from the legislative piece, I mean, I understand that part of it, but if it's dependent on funding and we have six key critical aspects all related to housing that are going to be delayed, or we're waiting for something, that gives me great concern based on the feedback that the community gave me in the context of campaigning. So that would be it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Sanford, I'll give, I, I think I know what the response is going to be, but I'll give the planner a chance to, to respond. No.
Okay.
There, now it is.
Thank you, worship. A lot of the housing, you know, it needs some legislative changes, but a lot of it is, is premised on fundamentals. So we can't build out a large subdivision without, you know, number one, make and plan upgrades to the wastewater collection and discharge system. So a lot of that depends on that. So the first ones have to be done first, because they're enabling fundamentals, and then we can get to, to housing, like Block House Hill will depend a lot on, on the fundamentals as well. Some of them are, are different, though. Some of them are, you know, there's, there's different aspects, but, but a lot of it has to do with our capacity.
And some of them, correct me if I'm wrong, Dawn, but the way I read that was that some of them are own legislation?
Yes.
So that it's, it's related, Counselor Sanford, to passing the land use bylaw?
Yeah, the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw, like the subdivision bylaws as part of that project as well. So that has to be put in place.
For those to proceed.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think what I need is a better understanding exactly of what fundamentals are, because if I understand correctly, when I look at this wastewater treatment plant is well underway, and we're trying to build the capacity there, there is some current capacity that exists. So I would anticipate that we would be able to move, depending on what those fundamentals are, some of those pieces forward. So again, I'm just surprised they're all in yellow. Anyhow, that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Duggan?
Along the same line as what Counselor Sanford is saying, and I guess I don't understand why we can't move forward with some of the housing stuff while also working towards the fundamentals. So yes, the wastewater treatment plant is obviously something that we need to focus on, but I just don't see why we can't start the planning phases and some of the other stuff. I know that we need to do some adjustments to the bylaws and such, but I guess I would just like to see that move forward faster in whatever way we can make that happen. And I'm also a little bit disappointed to see that it's not prioritized better. I brought that up last time when we were talking about it. I just find that housing is way too far down the list for where I would like to see it. So in talking about, you know, the potential to go over the chart and sort of look at the waiting again, that's something that I would be interested in, just because I don't, this doesn't quite align with what my ideas would have been, although I understand the first handful, I think that there's room, some wiggle room to change things.
In, in response, there are things we can start doing, like, like with site planning for Block House Hill, there's an affordable, affordable housing component. So we can start partnering with perhaps the South Shore Housing Coalition to, to get that started, but we can't actually, I may not have explained properly, we can't actually build out the whole thing, but we can start, for sure, for sure. Yeah.
And I think that's just, I think that's the point, is like, sure, we can work on all the other stuff in the background and get that stuff ready. Why not have a plan ready to go for when that stuff is completed, so that the wastewater treatment plant is finishing, and then we can say, right, now we're prepared to take the next step, and we haven't prolonged it by X amount of months or years.
Yeah. No, and I, I would note for counselor's benefit that, and Dawn, jump in here at any time and correct me, that most of what we do actively ourselves in the provision of housing is regulation through zoning and through land use regulation and also through servicing. So I, I know it seems kind of counterintuitive to say that the servicing is what we need for housing, but there is, there is a partial argument to be made there, in that that's what we do directly, where, you know, when we zone, it's, it's up to the private property owners to seek permits and things to actually provide the supply of housing. Generally, we're not in that business. So I think that's why, how, because housing for us is, is indirect, more than direct. Would you classify it?
Well, there has been changes to the MGA that you can be in the housing business now, if you have it in your budget.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, the last time I was in Antigoneish, there's a, I think it's, is it Riverside or River Estates? There's affordable housing that the, the town of Antigoneish was working with, it's a society there for affordable housing. So it's all partnerships, like the town didn't build affordable housing, but they were partners, which is what I would hope that we could do something in that, which is in the CCP affordable housing.
Yeah. Does that make sense for Counselor Sanford?
It makes sense what you're saying, but what, we're sitting here as landowners, and we have assets that are being underutilized, and the opportunity exists for us to utilize those assets in the context of housing. But if we keep stalling it and delaying it and dragging it out and not moving it forward, it doesn't benefit the town and the residents at all, right? So when you, again, at all, right? So when you, again, the residents elected us to be here, when they're telling us that we need housing as a priority, then I believe that we need to be doing everything in our power that's possible to be able to move in that direction. So I guess when I'm not seeing the green on some of these lines, I'm thinking, what are we doing here? Makes sense.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Wershup. Yeah, same concerns everyone else has here, especially when it comes to the housing, because that was really a, probably one of the loudest things we heard through our consultations with the public through Project River. And when I see the yellow, that does concern me. But the other thing that concerns me too is when we talk about the capacity of the sewage treatment plant. I mean, it just seemed like the day we decided we were gonna start building something, all of a sudden, we have a capacity problem. And then that, so what, to what degree? Does that mean we can't build any more houses in Lunenburg, period? I mean, like, how many houses can we build? I mean, can we build fifty? Can we build a hundred? Can we build, maybe we can build five hundred? I don't know. Like, that would be nice to know. And that might give us a, then we're like, that, I think alleviates this feeling that, oh my God, we've got to sit around and wait for all these things to be done, yeah, before we go, go on. And the other thing. And the other thing is, you know, especially specifically with Blockhouse Hill, is there any way we can get some, some, like, options for what that development might look like? I mean, we're really, you know, we don't, especially the Don made, like, what sort of concepts can we, can we sort of, is there concepts we can start considering?
Through the mayor. Now, we need to follow the plan, right? We do have a plan. The CCP is to, we have to relocate the campground. We've started working with them. Comprehensive development has to be enabled. So that's our MPS and our LUB in the new subdivision bylaw. And that's gonna dictate your form, right? It's no good for me to come in with different designs if you're not following the plan. We have to look at a study for the conditions of sale and municipal land bank, or community trust, or affordable housing in some other form. And that it also has a commencement, master planning study. So we want, we want the best possible design to meet, you know, a number of objectives in the CCP through that design. We also have to consider the UNESCO component and the buffer. So there are a lot of aspects to that, that really we need to go in, we have to wait and do it right, because it's a very valuable and strategic piece of land. But the very, at the very, you know, the soonest we can look at that is when we have our new subdivision bylaw and our new LUB, because that's gonna dictate the, what's going to go there, what can go there, and what are the standards.
I'm gonna go to Counselor Ernst first, because he hasn't spoken yet, and then Counselor Sanford again.
My question, I guess, just with what I'm hearing with all this, we keep referring to Blockhouse Hill with all of this, and certainly, to me, Blockhouse Hill and affordable housing in the same sentence is almost contradictory. It's a wonderful launch point to look at what's going up there. And from everything I'm understanding and hearing about, I think something very wonderful will happen there. But should we focus on that as the main thing? Or is there an opportunity to look at other places in town that may be more affordable for lower income people?
Through the mayor, it's town-owned land, so we have some control over what goes there. Affordable housing should be integrated. There shouldn't be one area of affordable housing in a, it should be integrated with, you know, all different types of housing, which is what comprehensive development needs.
Counselor Sanford?
But there is other land. Yes, absolutely. There's more land.
Thank you. I was just wondering, I know that we're expecting by fall, our documents will be ready, and we'll be able to go forward. So to Counselor Duggan's point, is it possible for us to be ready, when we get those documents confirmed, to be able to move forward as opposed to waiting to fall, and then saying, okay, we now have our documents, so now we're going to do A, B, and C? Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Sanford. Look to the CAO or the planner to weigh in.
I don't really understand the question.
You, Wershup, we've had some very helpful presentations made by Housing Nova Scotia in the past, and there might be some affiliate groups. I think you've mentioned South Shore Housing, Action Coalition, Missoula Land. Might be good to get them to present to council, let them know, let you know about the options that they have for various programs and funding opportunities. We are an active funder of at least two facilities, subsidized apartments within the community already, at Blockhouse Hill and Cornwallis Street. I don't know the actual count, but it provides vital subsidized housing to the community. And of course, we're also a significant partner in Harbor, at Harborview Haven. But I think for any new program opportunities, it might be good to have them come and speak to us, or at least get some information to see where the partnership opportunities might be, and how do we kickstart this initiative perhaps a bit sooner than we have initially projected.
And I think, Counselor, if I may try to reinterpret Counselor Sanford for the benefit of staff, I think the, the question was really a broader question, which is, you know, I would make the point that the single best thing we could do for housing potentially in the community is our land use regulation, because municipal land use regulation is a key driver of housing in affordability all across the continent, really. And upzoning and more permissive zoning is a key to addressing that. But at the same time, I think what Counselor Sanford's point was, is while we're waiting for these things to come online, can we be doing the planning for things so that we can hit the ground running when they, when they do?
Sure. We can, we can start working with groups. Absolutely. Absolutely. We should, because it's gonna take a long time. Years, sometimes.
But yeah, I mean, so once we have the land use regulations redone, the options that are presented in our land use regulations would be available in the appropriate zones all over the community for private sector players, or, you know, not-for-profit players, or individuals, you know, anybody, as long as they get their permits. Counselor Halverson?
I'd like to ask, I see Dennis is here, join us. Perhaps, Dennis, could you answer for us the question about what the capacity is right now of the treatment plant?
Yeah, I can comment on that. I don't have specific numbers in front of me, but you know, that's something that we're trying to work towards. But from what I understand is these other initiatives that we have on the go, that is gonna help our current capacity. And that's the saltwater intrusion initiative that we're trying to get a hold of, which is trying to eliminate, or at least vastly reduce, the amount of saltwater that gets put into our system from our tides down at the waterfront. And it has an effect on the, on the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant. And the other initiative that we have on the go is separation of storm sewer from the sanitary sewer. And I think that those things are gonna be able to free up capacity for us in the plant. So yes, that that will, that that will have an effect on our, on our, on our capacity in the short term, for sure. I believe that there is, with those, that there'll be capacity that adds a somewhat amount of housing in the short term, but I just don't have net numbers for you.
Yeah, I don't think we're asking for, you know, could we add twenty or fifty or two hundred? But I do wonder, in your opinion, I don't know, we've gone over this ground before, but in your opinion, where are we with the waste treatment plant? I mean, are we, are we hovering at capacity right now, based on the conditions you're talking about with the saltwater intake and the conditions around that?
I, I think it depends on the time of year. I think that it's a certain times of the year, what we are close to it. And then other times of the year, what one is drier, that we, that we are a ways from it, so.
Yeah, I think the answer for, if there's any time of year where we're close to capacity, then we're, we're close to capacity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it could be. But as I say, we're expecting that.
Your worship, and say it's around forty percent with the saltwater remediation. It's quite a significant.
It is significant, yeah.
Yeah, volume that we're.
What's forty?
Four, well, there's forty percent of the wastewater retreat is made up of saltwater that's coming into the plant through cracked pipes, not having check valves at lift stations along the waterfront. So, no, it may not actually be forty, it could be a lower amount, but it is a significant percentage, and thereby increase our capacity. So in the upcoming budget, that's something that Public Works will be putting forward for your consideration, are some significant investments in remediating that situation, because that really can't be allowed to exist. It's very expensive to treat wastewater, it's damaging to the whole biological process, because salt kills the healthy bacteria, and on and on into the night. So lots of good reasons to try and make that a budget priority. And of course, that's, that's why I think we all concur, that that is like numero uno CCP action item, you know, system improvements to the collection system. Yep.
Exactly. Thank you, Bee.
Sorry, Dennis, were you looking to weigh in?
No, I was just to thank and be to, to explain a bit for further, but yes, that's the way that I, that I understand it as well. And we've identified, we've, as I say, we've had some studies done by CBCL, and that we've got recommendations to, that we've put forward for the upcoming budget, so.
Thanks. Any further questions of council?
I have a few, if everybody else has done. Okay. I was looking at number six and number thirty-two, and just thinking about lead staff. And I noticed that those were sort of engineering-heavy, but to me, they really smacked of, to the point councillors made earlier, of a planning function. So I'm wondering what the, what the reasoning is there for staff?
So number six was planned for long-term of all municipal facilities, including renovation, sale, or lease. I think Paul Bracken is leading that one. There is a component of that that speaks to a strategy, a public engagement strategy around that. So that's, that's somewhere in the CCP.
Well, I was just thinking, Dawn, in the context of.
Usually it follows within planning and development, yeah. Or working with Mr. Bracken on that, yeah.
Yeah, and it was facility need, as well as, you know, existing facilities potentially, which would be, I thought, very much a planning function. So I was just curious about that.
Well, he's doing that now. He's already, he's already started his assessment. And if he has any questions, he asks me, so.
Okay. And then number thirty-two, the, basically, the recapitalization strategy for the, for the long-term revitalization of the education and recreation hub.
And I think Kelly Cunningham is the lead on that, recreation is the lead on that. So Kelly would be working with me on that.
Okay, so you're, you're, those are urban.
She did this GANT charge, sure, yeah.
But where there are urban planning functions, planning is involved, is what you're telling me.
There most likely will be, yeah. Because Kelly and I overlap quite a bit.
Or I assume we get an external consultant or something, or, yeah. And I was genuinely asking if there are urban planning things, like, I didn't, I assume they were.
They are. There's components, yes.
Okay. I was wondering too, about, to the CAO's point, re, a staff position to support economic development, because I noticed the creation of the economic inventory was fairly far out in the five-year work plan. And I was just wondering, that was based on current assumptions, but if that position were accelerated, then that would presumably become something that would be part of their response.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Right on, yeah.
One for the assistant clerk, the, the public participation strategy, is that envisioned to be a standalone document and process? Like, that wouldn't come into a comms plan or anything, would it?
They're, they're somewhat linked in the way that they're worded in the CCP, but it can, yes, be a standalone document. The approach that I took to developing that critical path was, I'm feeding back, the approach I took to that was that the public participation strategy was, would be done first with the, a comms plan update kind of happening, trailing afterwards.
Yeah, thanks. I just noted, because in other municipalities where I've seen them do it, it's a standalone document, so that seemed sensible. So I just wanted to get your views on that. Thank you. Ms. McCallum? And the last one was in relation to number thirty-four, the, the performance indicators. Is it envisioned that that is going to be based on the evaluation matrix, met, matrix, metrics, that were identified in the CCP Chapter twelve? And then if so, is it envisioned that we would just do an annual assessment of those, and how are we creating the baseline data then, and when would that be? I just think it's important to have those results-based metrics to identify sort of performance objective, and how they're being met.
Yeah, this is one that Dawn and I were collaborating a bit on, because she has some more familiarity with the Cody Institute. But yes, the intention was that we would, we would begin with the, the metrics that are in the CCP, and then expand from there.
Okay.
Feel free to add to that, Dawn.
I think it was consultant was, was for that one. I'm trying to remember. It was, I think there was a consultant.
Yeah, and I'm.
It's a specific kind of indicator that they're looking for.
Okay.
And I can't remember what it was.
No worries. I just, we're throwing darts in the dark if we don't.
And I don't remember.
Sort of do it.
Right. It came from the CCP, and there was, there's a certain kind of indicator. I can't, I can't read it from there. Is it development evaluation? I can't, I can't see that.
Yeah. Phase one, seek out training or other educational resources on results-based development evaluation. And the Cody Institute was included in that.
Right. I think I put the definition under, I can't read that, the definition underneath it. So it's, it's a specific type. It's not like a behavior type. It's a, it's a certain, and, oh yeah, it incorporates innovation and change, and yeah. It's different than, you know, so many feet of whatever relayed down for road. It's different. Are you, you know, you, you know, you process so many permits. It's not like that. It has, and I don't really understand it. It has innovation built into the structure, so that its continuous improvement and innovation is changed through evaluation.
Yeah, so it's not a fixed metric?
No.
In the sense of, we, we're gonna build.
And I don't, that's all I know about it. I don't know.
So it's not, we're gonna build two kilometers worth of sidewalks?
Right. It's not like that.
No, it's designed to be innovative and evolving.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Go where no municipality has gone before. Is that it? And how are you going with that, Counselor Halverson?
I just want to keep that all up.
Should have bingo cards.
Do.
Okay, I think that was it for me in terms of the ones that I had. Oh, no, there was one more. Just in the sense that this is, I think, an excellent first crack at a five-year sort of plan. And I know you and I have, on occasion, chatted, Ms. Renton, about sort of getting into the habit of then annual corporate planning coming out of this, so that, you know, you can see all the different five years, that then we would have an ability to, alongside our budget process, do an annual corporate plan. And then at the end of the year, that gives us a good basis to say, you know, we got this done, we didn't get that done, this is why, kind of thing, and really hold ourselves, I don't wanna say accountable, but you know what I mean? Like, make sure we're, we're, I know that's the word you want to use.
The buzzword probably.
So I'm just, I'm assuming that that is, is council's pleasure that that be done, or, I mean, that would have to be a council directive. I'm looking around the room just would have to be a council directive. I'm looking around the room. Does do people think that's a good idea or a bad idea? What do we think?
I think if we're going to do the exercise, it would behoove us to have, I would like to see that every every time that we see an agenda, I mean, just tagged on the back end, just to say, remember, these are the things we're going for. And it just to keep them top of mind because if we, you know, if it's not the side of the desk, then they're going to get they're going to drop off, right? So. But yeah, as far as having a, you know, a look corporately at what we're trying to do each year, I think that's we should always have our goals in mind.
Well, and I think I think I will say, I mean, it depends. I'm not sure what sort of staff workload can accommodate. And there's a risk we run of, you know, the reporting leads to the work not getting done because it's too much reporting. We have talked about quarterly reports. If we have an annual plan, that then we can base quarterly, like it's the 40-year plan, the five-year annual, and then the quarterly reports is sort of how I see it working in in practice. And our first quarterly report is actually next month. We've got to build a template for that. But I think that, you know, to to speak to the point about staff, I think it's a little work intensive right now just because we're building the templates. Hopefully, operating the templates is a lot easier on the go forward. So do we just want to go back to the the questions posed by Ms. Renton? I mean, those were all great questions from counselors, and thank you. I presume that was useful for staff.
If we could maybe we could just touch on them. Some of the questions counts, staff have a council, your worship.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to.
Is that okay?
Yeah. So.
Do you want me to prattle through them quickly there? Just.
Or is it just the two or are there more?
So the first being are there projects and initiatives the CCP is missing? So since the time of its original filing back in summer, early fall 2020, have there been new items that have come forward that we need to capture in this list of 35 that we staff may be unaware of? Nothing particular comes of mind, but just thought it would be helpful to take a look. There's been a number of months that have since elapsed. So that's just a question maybe you can just pitch out there to answer now or later, your worship.
They're so ambitious. 35 isn't enough for them.
There we go.
I would just I would just, I think everyone made the emphasis that I think since this plan has come into has been adopted, I think, again, housing has really come to the forefront. And whatever we can do to advance that, I think everyone's articulated the points already on that. But I think count as a as a council, I think that is our priority. I think we can agree on on that, that we want to see that go forward.
And certainly, the way we did the plan, everything affects everything else.
Of course. Yeah. And we, yeah, we understand that, you know, the infrastructure has to come first.
So to that end, that kind of leads into the next question. Do the priorities identified by staff in the waiting and Gantt chart exercises align with those of councils? If not, should we collaborate on a joint waiting exercise or exercises? So should we pick up the elements of housing, for instance, and run through a waiting exercise with you and say, let's take a new look at that and see if there might be some reassessment of priorities based on that? Because it seems that we are out of step with what council is identifying and what the public is telling you.
So I I I will say, and counselors can object or view this differently, I really worry about us diving too much into waiting and rewaiting because I think we can wind up eating up two years. We could eat. We could. We could spend the whole four years just waiting and rewaiting. I think that, you know, the the line item is what we're aiming for is to get the 35 directions done in the in the five years. And we simply can't get everything done all at once. I don't think, and counselors can correct me, that staff are particularly out of step with the council priorities in terms of the scoring. I think it's just that some things are affecting other things. But I'll I'll defer to counsel on that. I just I would caution counsel that, like, we will get into six months of waiting and rewaiting. And I worry about that. Counselor Sam?
I would agree. I don't think it's necessary to go back through to the waiting. I'm wondering if you could just take our word for it, Bea.
Trust us.
Oh, your worship, how do we shuffle it all around?
Deputy Mayor is itching is itching. So we will allow him this extravagance.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I think the the one to 35 is fine. And I and I sincerely understand why they're weighted the way you have them weighted. And I think we could all change it around. But to no avail, I think it's a job well done. I sort of, when, you know, just listening to us earlier, I just wrote two things down. And one of them was that, this is what I heard, we want to build an organization to accommodate anticipated growth. So that seems to be, you know, overall, I mean, yes, you have to, you know, there's this, the one, two, three has to be done too. But if you don't do that, nothing really will happen. And then the other thing I wrote down is that that we knock down as many barriers as we can as we move along here to make, you know, to get housing in high gear when when that, you know, when we're able to pull the switch, a lot of the barriers will be out of our way, whatever, and whatever that might be, right? Not just, you know, the land use by us. It's the other things that we have to do financially or or organizationally prepare ourselves for that.
Counselor Dunn?
I guess one of the things that I'm seeing on here is, you know, the waiting is one thing, and then the estimated finish date is another thing. So I just feel like the Blockhouse Hill one is the one that's too too far extended. I would like to see that worked on or, you know, an estimated finish date before 2024. There are some other ones on here, you know, the policy actions for its alternate housing models is 2022. Can we sort of look at renegotiating that date, I guess, to move it forward further? So not even, it doesn't need to be changed necessarily on the list of where it sits, but can we do something to move it forward faster, I guess?
Look to staff. I also know that, you know, one of the things that came out in the staff exercise and staff, and correct me if I'm wrong here, is how interrelated and contingent some of these things are too. So some of them could be accelerated or decelerated compared depending on the circumstances. So to Counselor Duggan's question about, you know, accelerating stuff.
Sure, we can. We can work and start some of these beforehand. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Those are, you know, those are estimates and some of it depends on funding and depend. There's so many variables, you know, the MPS and LUB going through on time and.
And I think it's important. I know council's eager and God knows, nobody's more eager than I am. But we don't want to, there is a limited financial and staff time capacity. And we don't want to, you know, run everybody ragged and have have burnout to the point that counselor's made. We want to be setting this up for success. But that does mean that some things are going to have to have to wait. And some things are contingent on building as we go. Okay, further questions?
So your worship, we had a couple of more on the second slide. How does council want to integrate the action items that we've talked about this evening in the work of council and as well the work of committees moving into the upcoming committee sessions? And more significantly, and immediately pressing budget 2021, 22 preparations that are well underway with our core finance staff. So something to ponder if if there's any direction that could be provided or perhaps at your next session on March 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Renton? Anybody else? Leave it on that? I mean, I think for my part, these have been the the study or the the working through or discussing all of the planning for the five-year strategic plan through Project Lunenburg has been taking place in workshop meetings and committee of the whole meetings. And it's in an effort. I don't think it's going to happen tonight unless anybody corrects me. But I think eventually, we're going to sort of pull a trigger and make a recommendation here to council that, you know, what staff have provided is the the sort of five-year direction. And then that will dictate, you know, how those things come on the council agenda or the committee of the whole agenda as we move forward with that process, depending on how fully fleshed out they are, that kind of thing, or whether indeed the committees of council have an appropriate role to play. I think we're fine to leave that with staff on the on the go forward. And obviously, that, you know, in as much as we can, budgeting this, this is this is our strategic plan and the budget that has to align in as much as it can with the strategic plan. We're not going to get this done. Does that sound good to counselors? Okay.
Designing something and it's not at all what you were looking for and you're disappointed. So we we thank you for that.
Heather, I'm seeing from Kathleen that they can't hear on the. I don't know if they can hear any of us. There's 18 comments in the chat. So that might be a series of we can't hear messages. Otherwise, these meetings are pretty good and seamless. So Deputy Mayor?
Oh, thank you, worship. Just to be, you know, asking, you know, how should I rather not have a report on this plan like we did on the last one? I think the last one you did was was far too much detail. You know, if someone sharpened a pencil, we knew about it. I mean, we don't need to go down that far. Yeah, no, yeah, you know, untask, untimed, on budget, you know, anything that or any, and you want a more sore report on than if there's something going sideways, then we want might want to delve into that a little more rather than. But if it's on time, on budget, you know, that's good, right?
Yeah. I also think just for the benefit of staff, where we have asked for these things quarterly, the more I I would suggest to you, make them as plug and play as you can, right? Build build the template for the first one. But, you know, make sure you just have to, like, I just don't want you guys generating a report from scratch every every time. I think that'll be difficult for you.
How about a line on the chart? It's a red line where you are here. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's a that's.
Quick and easy.
Potentially a good starting point with then, you know, I think we can leave it to staff to figure out. But I like that that suggestion, then maybe as and as staff did tonight, you know, contextualizing a few of the pieces and as has has our finance staff so dutifully do with the budget, you know, in terms of notes and things, I think we can leave. But we don't want to generate work for you. It's just important that we have these regular check-in opportunities to know that things are on track or if they're not on track, why why they're not on track and how we can get them back on track. That makes sense to everyone? That answer your question? Ms. Renton?
And again, a big thanks to staff for all their work on this. I know people put in considerable amount of work, not necessarily during regular working hours to try and meet this deadline. And I thank them very much for all their additional effort.
Perfect. And those, that's the end of your staff questions? Okay. Is so the the purpose of this last section of the meeting was to look at potentially revising potential recommendation to council. Is it council's feeling that we're there? Or should we just come back to this one more time for a, we'll let this with staff based on all our comments and see where things go and do a final sign off. But I think we're there. I think we're in a point to give a final sign off of this sort of dashboard at our March 2 meeting, probably to recommend to council for the presumably the council meeting thereafter. That seem amenable to everyone? All right. Then there be no further business. We will stand adjourned.